We're giving Commissioner Garcia a few minutes. Obviously, three of us have to be in the room.
I know that I'm here and ready whenever y'all are ready. Thank you, Commissioner Ellis.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Garcia is back. It is now time to go to public speakers. I'm gonna let the staff call out the list. If Mark Sloan is available, I want to let him come up for his minute first. I want to stress because there's not an item on the agenda related to the issue he may want to talk about. We'll just have to let him speak. Is he available?
Yes, sir. Mark Sloan, go ahead. You have one minute.
Mr. Sloan, you have one minute.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. This is Mark Sloan, the Coordinator for the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this morning. I have a fully-staffed office of professional, experienced staff, ready to react in the event that there is an emergency or disaster that may impact Harris County. And if there is a disaster and there's a declaration or any of those things are necessary, we will be in communication with the judge or staff, the county attorney, to ensure all legal obligations necessary to address life safety concerns are met. We maintain more than 100 plans that address the hazards we face in Harris County. These plans identify the response partners required to effectively assure that lives and property are protected. We will continue to coordinate, communicate with our partners and the public as we normally do. We consistently meet with our partners in both the government and private sectors to build and maintain these relationships needed to achieve our common goals. While the judge is out, we feel that our prior preparations and our strong base of partner support-
You can continue, Mark. I think you're about to make your point.
While the judge is out, we feel that our prior preparations and our strong base of partner support means that the residents can expect that the county's commitment to their safety is as strong as ever. Thank you for your time.
Mark, thank you for the work that you do. I thought it was important to get that on the record. Thank you so much. You do have a great team. Members, we have 79 people who signed up to speak, so I want to- 76. I want to let people know that we want to be respectful of everyone's time. We want to hear from all of you. Obviously, at some point, we will have to take a break for lunch, but we'll try. We hope you will observe the one-minute timeframe. So maybe think about your thoughts, and you can always submit something in writing. If you don't, if you have to leave or don't get to say everything you want to say, you can submit it. And I'll let you all, Tiffany, call out the list, and we'll just go in your order.
Okay. First is Speaker number 16, Richard Celine, speaking on item 21. You have one minute.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to just take less than a minute. There is a unique moment that comes along that connects what's happening at the federal and national level with what's also available to happen at the local level. And over the past year and a half, a piece of legislation has moved called the Community Disaster Resilience Zone Act, which passed actually much more bipartisan than the infrastructure bill did at the federal level. That essentially designates census tracts, which are actually in every one of the four precincts, to ultimately address most-at-risk, most-in-need scenarios for resilience. And it's more than just what the incredible work that the flood control district has been focused on. So in this regard, the opportunity to have a new Department of Operational Resilience and Sustainability actually aligns to that act, but also another piece of legislation.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you for being here, Mrs. Celine. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Next is Andy Escobar, speaking on item 21. You have one minute.
Are you here, Mr. Escobar? Okay. Next speaker. Oh, he's coming in. Sure. Thank you. And please state your name for the record when you are ready to speak.
Apologies. My name is Andy Escobar, and I am the Senior Campaign Coordinator with SEER, the Coalition for Environment Equity and Resilience. I am here to speak in strong support of the Commissioners' Court to establish a Department of Operational Resilience and Sustainability. I want to really stress Harris County's internal climate action plan. We'll need a dedicated team to ensure that Harris County meets its targets. This department can ensure the county has the needed capacity to implement its internal plan. SEER is proud to lead Harris County's community-oriented plan, which this department can implement with intention on equity. Additionally, this department can lead on meeting the federal- bringing down the federal dollars in support of our efforts. And as someone who was born and raised in Harris County and has lived through both environmental and climate hardships, I can see that this department will make a difference in creating a Harris County that's resilient and sustainable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you for being here.
Next is Neri Perez, speaking on item 21. You have one minute.
Hello. My name is Neri Perez, pronounced "a-dam." I'm representing the familia Vota in support of the creation of the Department of Resilience and Sustainability. Excuse me, my voice. So Harris County's internal climate action plan needs a dedicated team to ensure that Harris County meets its targets. The industries within Harris County are among the leading producers of carbon pollution in the county. All the while, FEMA ranks Harris County as one of the most at-risk counties in the nation for disaster. Therefore, resilience and sustainability should be built into everything that Harris County does, and I encourage you to expand that focus of the department to address all carbon emissions within the county. In this way, this department can help SEER Harris County towards a cleaner and safer future. Also, on a personal note, I hope you all have a bike rack in those plans, since there isn't one around this building. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Saba Blanding, speaking on item 23. You have one minute.
My name is Saba Blanding, and I'm a resident of Precinct 2. I want to thank the Harris County Library System for the robust online options through Libby, which have been a lifeline for my family through this especially hot summer. I ask the county to increase its investments in pollution control for the upcoming budget cycle. Poor air quality in the Harris County area contributes to thousands of deaths every year. According to the Environmental Defense Fund in Harvard University, one year of particulate matter pollution contributed to over 5,000 preventable deaths. Between 2016 and 2020, chronic respiratory disease was the sixth-leading cause of death in Harris County. Public safety means clean air. I also want to take a moment to address Agenda Item Number 380 and ask you to follow the JMI recommendation from June 2020 to drop cases of anyone who has a nonviolent case older than nine months and to replace the chiller system. And Harris County Jail within HVAC system and properly regulate air climate in the JPC. Also, number 192, 10K for Rikers. Is that a joke? That's not rhetorical.
Thank you.
Next is Laura Gallier, speaking on item 23. You have one minute.
My name is Laura Gallier. As you consider the upcoming budget, please do not increase the law enforcement budget. Instead, prioritize prevention of crime. The impacted folks I know didn't want to break the law, but they were locked out of the legal job and housing market due to decades-old run-ins, and they're having difficulty finding housing, health care, and jobs that pay a living wage. Harris Health is a great service, but the wait times are too long, and even with an appointment, the patient has to wait and is sometimes turned away due to not enough resources. Meanwhile, pretext stops and surveillance take a lot of resources, destroy the community's trust in law enforcement, and don't improve public safety. Please support a safe community by investing in health care, housing, and jobs for vulnerable people, not additional policing. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next is Linda Morales, speaking virtually. You have one minute. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, and prayers for Judge Hidalgo. Linda Morales, with the AFL-CIO, representing 95 labor unions here in Harris County, speaking on item 34 relating to adopting health and related benefits. Respectfully, we ask you not to balance the budget off the backs of workers, please. Offering superior health benefits is generally one of the simplest but most effective steps you can take to reward and attract talent. A healthy employee is present and more productive. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Alexi Swarsky, speaking on items 179, 186, and 380. You have one minute.
We have rights here in the United States. Being accused of a crime does not entitle the government to subject someone to cruel and unusual punishment. The Harris County Jail has failed the state inspection twice recently. Proper care of prisoners in our jail is more important than paying private attorneys to sue the state of Texas over in-thought election laws or paying attorneys to defend county employees under investigation, or spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for private security detail for one county judge. The lives of the inmates, of the female jailer who was raped and beaten at our jail, and the other staff are just as important as the county judge's life. Spend some of the $3 million we have left from ARPA on the needs of the jail and keep everyone safe. Speaking of county money not spent well, why do we have- why don't we have a detailed budget for that $2.5 billion Harris County bond? Strains with the needs of those who need help with health care here in Harris County, but there is not a detailed list of how the increase in taxes we call the bond-
Thank you, ma'am. Time is up.
That's called a scam.
And would you say your name for the record? Just say your name into the mic.
All right, Alexi Swarsky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to remind folks, make sure you call your name out for the record, please.
Next is Speaker 33, Kyle French, speaking on items 188, 192, 252, and 380. You have one minute.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Kyle French, for the record. Speaking on behalf of the Harris County Jail and its issues, I think it's very inappropriate that we're paying officers to go to a holiday trip to Rikers, not the model that we want to set here in Harris County. As you know, the in-custody deaths are way up. Abuses are being reported, and we still want to know where's the camera footage? We've got $1,000 Bosch- excuse me, $1,000 Bosch cameras all throughout the jail, yet we have no answers. You can't go to the bathroom without a camera watching you. So these folks that are here in the back today, these mothers, want to know what happened to their children. We don't need a new jail, as is being proposed. We need to invest more tax dollars into mental health awareness, mental health care, as our judge stepped down yesterday. These folks need to have answers. They need to have help. They don't need to be beaten when they go down to the jail clinic for help. I spoke last week at the-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Krish Gundo, speaking on items 252 and 380. You have one minute.
I'm not sure they're coming in or not. Okay, make sure you say your name for the record, please. I know you outside. Just say your name for the record before you start.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Krish Gundo. I'm the co-founder and director of Lexus Jail Project. I think I'm signed up to speak for item number 380 and 252 about the jail and the renewal of the contract with the Harris Center for Mental Health and IDD. I don't know if you're aware of the data from a recent investigation by Houston Landing. Forty-six percent of the 114 individuals who died over natural causes in the custody of Houston-area jails were people with mental illness and disabilities before they entered the jail. Those are clients of the state. Five out of the 28 people who died last year were clients of Harris Center. Five people who died in the state in custody of the jail were clients of the Harris Center. So I'm asking that when you renew the contract with Harris Center, please put some audit mechanisms in place for performance measures, for outcomes, for data on how many people that are sitting in our jail with mental illness are dying, especially people on the forensic waitlist, because as you know, the forensic waitlist is over two years long right now, and we need to know how many people with IDD, which is Intellectual Development Disability-
Thank you. Your time is up.
-are on the waitlist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Lori Swearingen, speaking on item 252. You have one minute.
Hi, my name is Lori Swearingen. My son Malik Swearingen was released from Harris County Jail on July 15 of this year. He has not been seen since. Malik suffers from schizophrenic, traumatic depression, unlike our county judges Linda Hidalgo. My son cannot afford private, out-of-state psychological care. My son does not know his address, has no ID, has no money. We have been searching to Noahville for 22 days. We have reached out to the police, constables, attorneys, and the media. No one will help with our search. Can you please help us?
Thank you for coming.
Next is Speaker number 35, Wendy Allgood, speaking on item 300. You have one minute.
Good afternoon. I'm Wendy Allgood with Comment Signs, State Signs. I'm speaking on behalf of my client for an increase in the sign outage for the Harris County Toll Road. My client is James Chang, principal owner of Ponderosa Land Development. He couldn't be here today because of emergency. We appreciate the court's consideration today for a formal approval of the variance. Ponderosa owns 6.1-acre site on the northeast corner of Beltway 8 and West Airport. We have a retail development compromise of four to five pad sites and associated infrastructure in place. We believe the recommended approval is warranted. One, our six-acre project will be cohesively entitled and constructed retail project. The larger sign will be utilized by all of the tenants there instead of several smaller individual signs creating visual noise. Our planned retail is distinguishable in size, use, and timing for the location and the area surrounding. A larger sign will benefit all tenants more efficiently and effectively, as well as the patrons, as well as the local first responders and other individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Leah Barton, speaking on item 314. You have one minute.
Good morning. I'm Leah Barton, Managing Director in the Office of County Administration. We're excited to share our 2023 Harris County Recovery Plan submitted to the U.S. Treasury in describing progress in American Rescue Plan Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Harris County has built a balanced portfolio of investments totaling $643 million across priorities identified by Commissioners' Court: health, housing, jobs and education, justice and safety, and county operations. We're investing in a holistic, equitable, evidence-based, and sustainable recovery. We're grateful to the federal government, members of Commissioners' Court, and your staff, county department leaders and staff, and our broad network of community partners for all of your support. Special thanks to Romeo Solis and the ARPA Portfolio Management Office, and to Christina Robertson from OCA for graphic design of the report. Our recovery plan is available online at harriscountyarpa.org. We encourage everyone to explore the report and share it broadly.
And you got all that done in one minute? Thank you.
Two seconds is fair.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Everybody else take notice.
Yeah.
Next is Garnet Coleman, speaking on item 371. You have one minute.
Representative Coleman, we're always glad to see you. Appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you.
And we're glad you're doing well.
Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Ramsey, Commissioner Briones, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm here today speaking on behalf of my client, Cigna, who wants to thank you all, first of all, for allowing them to provide health coverage to the employees of Harris County. And I'm asking you to move an item to the regular agenda that's on the consent agenda based on the recommendation for the healthcare contract. And that's the only thing. I would like to say something, a piece of personal privilege, if you wouldn't mind. I went through in 1995 what Commissioner, County Judge Lena Hidalgo was going through. I was hospitalized as a second, two-year member of the Texas Legislature with major depression, and it's very difficult, but it's something that can be dealt with and managed, and I think she will do just fine. But I want you all to know that this is a very difficult thing for someone in public life to do, and the comments that you all made today are really important and supportive comments. That and her courage is extremely important to people out there who have never experienced having mental illness and continue to experience. So I just wanted to commend her and let her and let you all know that it's very important that she has done this, because as they say, I have lived that experience, and Rodney, excuse me, Commissioner, you know that very well, because you were extremely helpful to me, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative, if you will, thank you on that item in particular. And let me just say that, as I've made comments earlier, that we all, we all, we all need to think about a mental health checkup. As much as we think, oh, you know what? It's been six months. I haven't had my blood work. I haven't had my checkup. Mental health should be known differently. And because you dealt with it, I believe you've given her and others the space and the power to pursue it, just as a checkup would be for anything else. And so I commend your leadership on so many levels, my friend. And on this particular item, you have helped open the door for many of us. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah. Thank you, Representative Coleman. I just want to say, I remember that time very well, and, you know, you were, in my judgment, one of the first public figures I know of to go public with it, and that was a very long time ago. And you went on and had a very successful career in the Texas Legislature, and we in Harris County have been beneficiaries of that. So thank you, sir. Next.
Next is James Donato, speaking on item 371. You have one minute.
Thank you. I'm James Donato. Salutations to Judge Briones and the Commissioners, including my Commissioner Ellis. Point of personal privilege, I worked for that first campaign for Curtis Graves in 1966. So I go back a few years. But I'm here as a member of the Cigna team. We've been a part of that team for about a decade, and Cigna has endeavored to include minorities in the MWE program since the beginning. We have, when it was just a gleam in your eye, we were offering percentages for the county business, and we exceeded the goals. So on behalf of Cigna, I want you to know that we appreciate the opportunity to work with the county, and we've also been successful with the wellness team providing a store for county employees to pick wellness products. Thank you all for your time.
Good deal.
Thank you.
James, thank you for coming down.
Next is Kimberly Thunderburg, speaking on item 371. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kim Thunderburg, President of Cigna's Government Education and Health System Business Division. I stand before you really with mixed emotions, that of regret, as I understand that you will be considering a change in benefits administration, but also of immense pride, given the results that we've been able to deliver over the past seven years. Together, we have witnessed health improvement through engagement in your wellness program. Together, we have driven benefits administration, custom tailored to the Harris County population, and resulting in mitigation of trend, industry-leading mitigation of trend, and we've supported the community, both through engagement and funding, on Harris County community initiatives that are very important. So as we have delivered on our promise, we are asking that you please consider what we have delivered for you, our collective momentum, and also the merits of our outstanding proposal and for any actions today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Terry Herrera, speaking on item 371. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Terry Herrera with Cigna. It's a pleasure to be here today. It has been an honor and my privilege to support you, your employees, and their families over the past seven years. We've grown together, and we've worked with you to improve the health and well-being of your population. We've seen positive improvement in preventive care utilization and a large increase in engagement in Cigna's wellness programs. We're proud of the results that we've achieved with you over the years, and we definitely thank you for your partnership. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Darren Bruton, speaking on item 371. You have one minute.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Darren Bruton with Aetna, and the Executive Director over Sales and Account Management for our company, and very happy to be here with you today, and just wanted to let you know that we are here if there's any questions that come up later in the court. We're here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jay Lee, speaking on item 380. You have one minute.
Make sure you say your name for the record. Greetings. I'm Reverend Josaleth Griffin Lee. I am Associate Minister of Brentwood Baptist Church here in Houston, and I lost my son, Evan Lee, to a custodial death here in Houston in Harris County Jail 511 days ago. Today, I still don't know what happened and the reason for him being in there on an era of the system. I have this open letter here with several other families that has experienced what I've experienced, along with their stories. If you would consider some type of accountability for our judicial system. So many families have been impacted and affected through our criminal punishment system. I'm just asking.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, and condolences to you and your family.
Next is Mo Cortez, speaking on item 380. You have one minute.
Yeah, make sure you say your name for the record, Mr.- Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mo Cortez. I'm a criminal legal advocate here in Harris County. I invite you at this moment to be open and vulnerable, and close your eyes, and I'll close my eyes, too. Audience may do that as well. Take a deep breath and breathe out. I want you to imagine Harris County in 2134, and 111 years from now. What will it look like? What would it look like without policing? What would it look like if everyone's needs were met? And we'll go ahead and open up our eyes in 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And the way we do that are planting the seeds. The way we get those fruits are planting those seeds today, and what that is, is I wanted to uplift what Saba-
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker number six, Jared Bazil. You have one minute.
Well, bless the people with the Lord's Prayer today. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us for our sins, as we forgive those who sinned against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thou is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker number nine, Katie Mirsta. You have one minute.
My name is Katie Mirsta. I live in Precinct Two and represent the Immigrant Legal Resource Center and the Houston Leeds Immigrant Rights Coalition. I support the community safety budget. I attended two Budget Town Halls last week and heard the OMB Director explain several factors contributing to the budget deficit, including increases in state restrictions on county budgeting decisions, such as the prohibition on decreases to the percent of funding that goes towards law enforcement, often categorized as public safety. I agree that public safety should be a priority in our community, but I believe social services are what increase public safety. At the Precinct One Town Hall, when the OMB Director noted that the responses to an interactive budget activity showed that the participants didn't want more funding for the so-called public safety category, the group of about sixty attendees cheered. Harris County residents are tired of sixty-five percent of the general fund going to the public safety and justice categories. If we increase that, that's money that will never be able to be used for social services as long as the state law is in place, no matter how great the need in our community becomes for other services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker number ten, Annie Vaughn. You have one minute.
Yes. I have lived at forty-seven, forty-five Brinkley and two-seventy North Carolina for over forty-five years. And all of that belonged to Vaughns. And they got this, and the taxes, they got forty-seven, forty-five Brinkley in somebody else's name. And they squatted on it, and they used my utility. And the way I found out about it, the water company sent the balance of the bill to me. But the taxes is all in their name.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what they gonna do.
Next is Jacob Clementic.
Hi, I'm Jacob Clementic. And I want to read something I read to Marissa Hansen about, well, about this clinical depression. As a person who takes medication prescribed by a psychiatrist, this is Saphrenia and her old comrades. And Saphrenia, because depression can lead to the ultimate crime, which is suicide. In the end, she did a plethora of unforgivable actions, such as voter fraud. I will still pray for her, and maybe she will become good and then become a rhino. Also, what I wanted to say is Commissioner Tom Ramsey did a good job of honoring Bryce Matthews, because he became an astro. And also Commissioner Ronnie Ellis did a great job by getting us to honor the nineteen sixty-four five.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what they gonna do.
Next is Jacob Clementic.
Hi, I'm Jacob Clementic. And I want to read something I read to Marissa Hansen about, well, about this clinical depression. As a person who takes medication prescribed by a psychiatrist, this is Saphrenia and her old comrades. And Saphrenia, because depression can lead to the ultimate crime, which is suicide. In the end, she did a plethora of unforgivable actions, such as voter fraud. I will still pray for her, and maybe she will become good and then become a rhino. Also, what I wanted to say is Commissioner Tom Ramsey did a good job of honoring Bryce Matthews, because he became an astro. And also Commissioner Ronnie Ellis did another great job by getting us to honor the nineteen sixty-four five.
Your time is up.
Action.
Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker number eleven, Christopher Rivera. You have one minute.
Hello. My name is Christopher Rivera, and I work with the Texal Rights Project. And I live in Precinct Two. I'm here to support the community safety budget. This is the second year the community has banded together to demand the freeze of law enforcement and the DA's budget in order to increase funding for social services like emergency utility assistance, emergency rental assistance, eviction defense, heart program, flood prevention, and mental health programs. These programs keep Harris County residents safe opposed to criminalizing them and punishing them. In regards to item number three eighty, I ask that you follow the JMI recommendations from June twenty twenty to drop cases on anyone who has a nonviolent case older than nine months, and replace the chiller system in the Harris County Jail with the HVAC system to regulate the climate. I'm also against item number one ninety-two, no more funding for law enforcement to study Rikers Island's jail or for tactical officer training. No more jails. Free the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Barbara Denson. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Barbara Denson, author of two books on climate change. Air is made up of seventy-eight percent nitrogen, twenty-one percent oxygen, point nine percent argon, and only point one percent other gases, including water vapor, carbon dioxide, methane, and neon. Water vapor, not carbon dioxide, makes up sixty-five to ninety percent of the greenhouse gases, depending on the amount of cloud cover. Note that in January of twenty twenty-two, the Tonga-Hunga volcano erupted in the Pacific Ocean. This eruption sent over a hundred and forty-six teragrams of water vapor into the Earth's atmosphere, equaled at thirteen percent of the water vapor already present, a huge increase. The volcanic plume circumnavigated the Earth in just one week and dispersed nearly pole-to-pole in three months. There are many people that believe that this increase in water vapor is what's causing our current heat wave, for a variety of reasons. I do not. And I only have one minute. I'd like to go into it more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Andrea Magana. You have one minute.
Hello, my name is Andrea Magana, and I am an advocacy fellow with Udi Juntos. I'm here to support funding a language access plan in Harris County. In February twenty twenty-three, my mother was admitted in Bentel Hospital due to a language, due to her leg. My mom was given diapers and wipes to relieve and clean herself. And in one of these moments, she accidentally sank her bedding. The nurse came in and did not speak Spanish. And when my mother went to explain that she could move a bit to get the bedding removed, the nurse began to move the bed in a horizontal position that moved her broken leg. My mother tried to communicate that the nurse was hurting her, and when they couldn't understand one another, she called me to translate. I was in school in Massachusetts at the time. There is no reasonable explanation for my mother to have called me as she needed someone to help her communicate. Even after when my father went to report what had happened, my parents, nobody spoke Spanish in that hospital for the report to be made. My parents are not the only ones to have poor access to translators and potentially put their lives at risk. I urge you to fund a language access plan in Harris County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker number fourteen, Yu Kim. You have one minute.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Kyu Kim, a senior volunteer at Udi Juntos and resident of Harris County. Today, I came here to request that the budget fund that be allocated to the heart throughout Harris County. Last month, Heart visited our organization and gave detailed information about the purpose and system and service. I thought it was an incredible program that handled nonviolent complaint and troubles that were difficult to cover with nine women alone on the heart of a citizen. We believe that it will play crucial role in improving safety and the health of Harris County residents. I hope that this program with limited operation in district in one and four will be implemented in all districts as soon as possible, so that most residents can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For sure.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker fifteen, Yeong Won Kang. And he'll be using the Korean interpreter. You have one minute.
So, she'll speak first, and then you can do English. So, she's speaking Korean first, and you have a minute to whatever you text.
So, she'll speak first, and then you can do English. So, she's speaking Korean first, and you have a minute to whatever you text.
Thank you.
I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mayon Kim, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place. Three-one-one service and Precinct Four connected to Google Translate. But other websites do not connect to Google Translate, so it took a lot of time and effort to searching for information what I need. I want to, I would like to request the expansion of the centralized language access program to all countrywide departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. More educational opportunities and expanded language accessibility of the website will help residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker number ten, Annie Vaughn. You have one minute.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Kyu Kim, a senior volunteer at Udi Juntos and resident of Harris County. Today, I came here to request that the budget fund that be allocated to the heart throughout Harris County. Last month, Heart visited our organization and gave detailed information about the purpose and system and service. I thought it was an incredible program that handled nonviolent complaint and troubles that were difficult to cover with nine women alone on the heart of a citizen. We believe that it will play crucial role in improving safety and the health of Harris County residents. I hope that this program with limited operation in district in one and four will be implemented in all districts as soon as possible, so that most residents can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For sure.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker fifteen, Yeong Won Kang. And he'll be using the Korean interpreter. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place.
I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place.
I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are impacted by the level of my English fluency. I took a couple of ESL programs at Lone Star College and worked at convenience stores for over ten years. After that, I applied to several places for a new job, but I struggled. I struggled a lot because of my limited English skills. Recently, while I'm looking for the English class I could attend, then I found out there are free ESL classes available at Harris County Public Library. However, it's not offered every place.
I'm Yeong Won Kang. I'm a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Udi Juntos. I'm immigrant from Korea in twenty-two thousand and four, and I have been living in Precinct Three of Harris County since then. When I visited one of the public libraries in Harris County, I found the book written in Korean. And then that made me touched and emotional, and that's a great impression on me. As an immigrant, many aspects of the life are[1579.58]
and I'm resident of precinct four in Spring Branch area. I have been living in a senior apartment for the low income for two years and about eighty percent of residents living that area is elderly Korean. However, all of staff only speak English and Spanish, so we cannot communicate in Korean at all. One last night, people gathered in front of my door where we heard loud growling and then complained of pain. No one was called 911 at that time, so I called them. The ambulance came a few minutes later and then everything was taken care of it. But after the patient left, I came to realize that no one dared to call 911 because they couldn't speak English. What I would have, what would happen if there's no one were in critical situation where every minute or every second count? Considering the unreasonable fact that there are no Korean-speaking staff in the apartment where eighty percent elderly Korean, eighty percent of residents who is Korean resident, Korean and then cannot speak English. We sincerely ask that terminals increase budget for hiring Korean staff who can help in language and then welfare of the elderly people to make easy their anxiety and inconvenience and for their safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Yan Lee, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
안녕하세요 저는 히스턴에 있는 우리 훈토스의 시민 참여팀에서 활동하고 있는 이연아입니다. 얼마 전에 훈토스를 통해서 좋은 활동하고 있는 하트에 대해서 알게 되었는데 진지하게 알았으면 저도 하트 프로그램의 도움을 받을 수 있었을 만한 저의 경우를 말씀드려 보겠습니다. 얼마 전에 옆집 단장을 넘어온 사나운 불독 두 마리가 우리에게 몹시 짖고 있는 상황이었고 너무도 무서워 소리만 지르는 동안 개들은 짖다가 뒤로 물러서서 도망을 갔지만 우리는 놀란 가슴을 누르고 한숨만 쉬었습니다. 911을 부르고 싶었지만 부담도 되고 웬만해서는 안 온다고 하기 때문이었습니다. 마침에 슬프게 지차가 지나가길래 통령을 통해 얘기했더니 조치를 해치겠다고 했지만 여태껏 아무런 소식도 없었습니다. 이러한 일들을 겪어보니 이 제도가 안성마침이 된것 같다는 생각이 들었고 이 제도가 널리 확산되어 저희 보호 구역에도 동등한 제도가 있으면 좋겠습니다. 보다 많은 인력으로 많은 지역별로 혜택들이 확산될 수 있도록 이 부분이 크게 발전되었으면 좋겠습니다. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Yan Ha Lee, a member of Senior Civic Engagement Team at Uri Huntos and a resident of Harris County precinct two. I recently learned about HART, the Holistic Assistance Response Team program through Uri Huntos. And I'm here to tell you how this program would benefit our community if it were to start being expanded in Harris County. Not too long ago, two bulldogs had entered our backyard through an open gate and were barking at us. Not knowing what to do, we began to shouting at the dog. Luckily, the dogs went away. The dog barked for a while longer. The dogs barked for a while longer before we finally ran away. We were scared and shocked and then did not know where to speak, seek help. We considered calling 911, but ultimately chose not to because it felt very burdened and stressful. I know that would not sense and also I doubt they would not send someone for in this case. However, by chance, security car passed by, so I talked to them through interpreter. They told they would take care of them, but there have nothing happened after that. After going through this, program like HART would work well for people like me with a non-emergency and then I personally hope that this program become widely used and introduced to precinct two as soon as possible. I sincerely ask for you consideration to investing some of our budget on the HART program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joshua Min Seok Na, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
안녕하십니까 저는 제 3국에 살고 있는 우리 훈토스의 홍보 담당하는 조차 만식나입니다. 2021년도까지 허드 아파트 하나인 파이먼 아파트에서 약 3년 동안 살았는데 언어가 되지 않아 신청서 작성 및 입주까지 다른 사람의 도움을 파대했고 입주 후에도 아파트 공지사항도 이해가 되지 않았 등 많은 어려움을 겪었습니다. 매달 기본적으로 집을 하는 NTP가 일정한 것으로 알고 있었는데 수입에 비례해서 NTP가 더 부가된다는 것을 미처 몰라서 대비를 못했습니다. 더 이상 집을 할 능력이 없게되어 어렵게 입주한 아파트를 나올 수밖에 없었습니다. 이 아파트에는 70% 이상의 한국 분들이 거주하고 있고 오륙 명의 사무실 직원들이 상주하고 있지만 그들은 영어 스페인만 사용합니다. 지금도 언어 때문에 고통받고 있는 한인들 노인들을 저와 같은 경우를 당하지 않을까 안타깝습니다. 따라서 한국을 구설할 수 있는 사람을 직원을 채용해서 언어 때문에 발생한 모든 문제를 해결해
Thank you. Your time is up.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joshua Min Seok Na. I live in precinct three and then I'm a receptionist and Korean senior liaison at Uri Huntos. I previously lived in, I previously lived at Pinmont Apartment, uh, third apartment complex. I have many difficulty because I have limited English skill and I often need to help from others to fill out application for moving in the apartment. Even after moving, I could not understand the apartment announcement. I only knew that the basic rent paid every month was constant and I did not know additional rent was charged in proportion to my income. So I could not afford to pay anymore as the rent increased. So I had no choice but move out from the apartment. More than seventy percent of residents is Korean elderly and who cannot speak English. And there are five to six office staff in the apartment, but no one can speak Korean and only English and Spanish. I make, it makes me depressed that Korean senior residents were still struggling because of their language barriers and they potentially suffer the same fate as me. Therefore, I sincerely ask you to allocate budget fund to update your language access plan and help hire multiple staff who can speak multiple languages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Emyang Roy, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
안녕하세요 저는 슈가랜드 살고 있고 우리 훈토스 시니어 팀에서 일하고 있는 유명순입니다. 25년 전에 이곳으로 이민 와서 지금까지 살고 있는데 지금은 나이가 들어 병원 갈 일이 많아졌네요. 건강 문제로 많은 의료 신청도 해야 되고 메디케이드 같은 서류도 신청해 보지만 모든 문서들이 영어나 스페인식으로만 되어 있어 어려움이 많습니다. 휴스턴 거주자로서 영어 능력에 관계없이 의료 혜택 및 모든 서비스에 언어로 인해 치료 시기를 놓쳐서 겪어야 하는 일이 없도록 한국어로도 가능하게 해주시면 좋겠습니다. 특히 저같이 나이가 많은 사람들을 전시하게 필요합니다. 언어 장벽으로 인한 환자는 진료 약속을 잡거나 약속을 놓칠 가능성이 훨씬 높고 그 결과 환자의 49%가 신체적 피해를 경험하고 의료 가실이 발생할 가능성이 더 높은 것으로 알고 있습니다. 특히 우리 시니어기에는 한국어 서비스가 절실하게 필요한만큼 해리스 카운티 예산을 언어 접근성 분야에 더 많이 할애해 주시기를 강고히 요청드립니다. 감사합니다.
Thank you.
Very good. Right?
Hello, my name is Lee Myung Sun. I live in Sugar Land and area, work with the Uri Huntos Senior Team. I immigrate here twenty-five years ago. I have been living here since, but I am getting older. I've been going to the hospital more often. I have to apply for a lot of medical treatment due to health problem. And I tried to apply for documents such as Medicaid, but all of those documents are only in English or Spanish, so it is very difficult for me. As a Houston resident, I hope that more public service will available in Korea so that people like me do not have to miss medical treatment simply due to language barriers. Elderly senior like me desperately need the language accessibility. According to the National Institute of Health, forty-three point two percent of physicians need interpreter service and twenty-one to seventy-six report limit access to interpreting service. We know that patients with language barriers are much more likely to miss appointment and make the wrong appointment. And as a result, forty-nine percent of those patients experience physical harm and also they are more likely to incur medical malpractice. Senior like me and my college, my colleague at the senior apartment desperately need a Korean accessible service. So we sincerely ask the more of the Harris County budget to be devoted to language accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ak Seung Choi. You have one minute, also using the interpreter.
안녕하세요 제 이름은 최옥순이고 지역구 3번에 살고 있고 우리 훈토스 시니어 시민 참여팀에서 일하고 있습니다. 한국인 노인이 70% 이상 거주하는 노인 아파트에 몇 분의 노인분들을 개인적으로 도와드리면서 경험한 것을 말씀드리겠습니다. 88세의 시니어분이 청각 장애 및 영어로 언어 소통도 안 되시는 분이 겪은 일로 대부분의 한국 노인들은 이중어의 어려움을 가지고 있습니다. 어느 날 하루 종일 연락이 안 되고 그분의 생사 확인을 할 방법이 없는 상황에 처했고 집계 가족도 없고 연락처도 없고 장애인용 전화기와 도어벨도 상태에선 오직 경찰을 불러 경찰에 입회와의 문을 열고 안전을 확인하는 방법밖에 없다 하며 시간을 지하는 중에 많은 분들이 문만 두드리고 안타까운 상황에서 아무 일 없이 안에서 문을 열고 나와 해풍우로 끝났지만 만약에 위급한 상황일 수도 있다고 생각하면 지금도 아찔합니다. 한국인 노인들이 70% 이상 거주하는 아파트에 한국어로 서비스를 받지도 없다는 것은 이해를 할수 없는 일이며 이런 아파트의 한국인 직원을 고용하여 많은 한국 분들이 남녀생을 독립적이고
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ak Seung Chee. I live in precinct four and I work for Senior Civic Engagement Team at Uri Huntos. I would like to tell you that I personally experienced how important language accessibility is while I'm helping the elderly in senior apartment in Spring Branch where Korean makes up more than seventy percent of their residents. One day, a resident of apartment complex could not be reached. The man was eighty-eight-year-old, non-speaking Korean senior with a hearing impediment, with a limited English proficiency, with no immediate family, no contact information, with no phone or doorbell for hearing disability. We had no way to knock, to know if he was okay or alive. I was in the situation where I had no choice other than to call police. With the police present, we can knock the door and then open the door and then finally he came out and safe. In that situation, I stood there knocking on the door with the time passing by and unfortunately the elderly come out the second, oh, sorry. I'm I'm thinking about what would happen if the situation had turned out badly. It is completely unacceptable that government apartment where non-speaking Korean make up more than seventy percent of their residents do not have a service in Korean. By employing Korean-speaking staff in their apartment, more Korean senior can live out the rest of their life with more independence and then dignities. I beg you to, I beg you to decide more funds for language accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next is Mamit.
안녕하세요 저는 히스턴 채널뷰에서 42년 살고 있는 이양숙이며 이 지역에서 35년간 가게를 운영했습니다. 몇년 전에 어느 추운 겨울에 가게 건물 뒤편에 아시안 노숙자 한 사람이 살게 되었는데 아마도 치매끼가 있는 듯이 보였으며 언어도 통하지 않았습니다. 경찰에게 신고를 했었는데 아무런 조치 없이 그냥 가버려서 화가 났어요. 그래서 내가 노숙자를 며칠간 보살피었는데 몇 날이 지나고 다른 노숙자가 오면서부터 문제가 생겼지만 아무런 도움도 받지 못했습니다. 어느 날두 사람이 보이지 않았고 어디로 보내졌는지 지금도 궁금합니다. 이처럼 심신미약 노숙자들을 돌보는 데는 경찰보다는 전문 인력을 갖춘 하트 제도가 적격이라고 생각하며 이러한 서비스를 확대를 위해 더 많은 예산을 하트에 배정해 주시기를 강고히 부탁드립니다.
Thank you.
My name is Hyang Suk Lee. I'm a forty-two-year resident of Channel View, Houston and a business owner for past thirty-five years. One cold winter a few years ago, I found one homeless Asian man living behind my store building. He likely had dementia as he was not able to communicate properly. I contacted the police in hopes they could help him. Police arrived at my location but left without taking any action, so I felt angry. For the next few days, I decided to look after the homeless woman, uh, man myself. Shortly after, another man come, another homeless man joined a couple of days later. But still no help were coming. However, one day, two homeless men suddenly disappeared and to this, until this day, I still wonder where they had gone. The HART, the Holistic Assistance Response Team program would be more suitable than the police in taking care of the homeless man. I had come to across because of their focus on homelessness. We implore we implore you to allocate more of the budget to HART program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Emyang Yu, also using the interpreter. You have one minute.
안녕하세요 저는 제 4구역에 거주하는 우리 훈토스 시니어 팀의 유명숙입니다. 저는 경찰이나 구일리를 대체할 하트 프로그램에 대해 들었으며 많은 부분에서 서비스를 제공하고 있는 것으로 알고 있습니다. 위급한 상황이 아닌데 경찰이나 구일질에 연락하기가 부담스러울 때 대체할 곳이 있다면 많은 도움이 될 것입니다. 휴스턴에서 마약 사용이 증가하고 있으며 폭력으로 이어질 수 있는 더 많은 정신건강 위기에 기여할 수도 있습니다. 이를 방지하기 위해 하트는 공중복원 접근 방식을 통해 폭력의 근본 원인을 해결함으로써 이를 수행할 수 있습니다. 이 프로그램의 자금을 확충함으로써 약물 납용 예방 및 사후관리 전문가를 늘려 우리 청소년들이 이에 빠지지 않고 건강한 심신으로 더 넓은 세상으로 나갈 수 있을 것입니다. 본인은 해리스 카운티가 하트에 더 많은 자금을 투입하여 약물 납용에 대한 보다 광범위한 서비스가 제공될 수 있도록 강력히 촉구합니다. 제 의견을 들어주셔서 감사합니다.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, my name is Myung Suk Yu. I'm living in district, uh, resident, I'm resident of district four, a member of Uri Huntos as a senior civic engagement team. The HART program can offer very, of a variety of services without the use of the law enforcement. This program would be perfect for non-emergency or when someone had uncomfortable calling to, calling police. Usable drug is increased in Houston area and so it can cause to more mental health crisis which can lead to violence. In order to prevent this, the HART can do this by addressing the root cause of violence through public health approach. By increasing the funding for this program, the number of expert in drug abuse prevention and then follow-up management can increase so that our young people do not fall into it and then go into a wider world with a healthy mind and body. I strongly urge Harris County to devote more money to the HART program so that wider range of the service for substance abuse can be afforded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker Twenty-three, Maria Rocha. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, members of the Harris County Commissioners Court. My name is Maria Rocha and I'm a policy advocacy fellow with Uri Huntos. I live in Houston, Texas and I'm a constituent of Commissioner Rodney Ellis. I'm here today to encourage the allocation of $12 million of the Harris County Fiscal Year 24 budget towards expanding and sustaining the holistic assistance response team or HART program countywide. Since this court approved the creation of the HART program two years ago, over 3,500 calls have been made to HART. Two thousand two hundred sixty-five calls have been diverted from 911 and people were able to get the help they need in a nonviolent manner. As a social graduate student, I consider my future roles in crisis intervention. The HART program gives me hope for nonviolent crisis management, but it needs to be expanded. All Harris County residents deserve access to nonviolent care and assistance and funding HART would save all involved parties time, money, and resources. I urge you to consider allocating $12 million to expanding and sustaining the HART program from the upcoming budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you want to say something, Commissioner?
Uh, no, you're the last speaker?
No, I think about six more.
I'll wait, I'll wait till the other speak. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker Twenty-six, Yanja Norman. You have one minute.
Commissioners, I'd like to ask this one. Before I start my testimony, I would like to make clear for the record, we are Korean-Americans. When we say Koreans, but we are Korean-Americans. Yeah. Hi, my name is Yanja Norman. I'm with Uri Huntos. I live in precinct four. Many person, I would like to be case, more language access for ready Paris and invest in community education and outreach. Many fortunate relation Korean-Americans only speak limited English and they struggle when facing emergency. Accessing resource during this emergency become a huge challenge when confronting, confronted with a language barrier. For instance, during a cold front last December, Harris County sent out an emergency messaging.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up.
Is it real quick?
Yes, I, I don't finish that.
You promise?
Message reminding resident to protect the poor peace. Pets, people, pipe and, and pet plants. However, there was no Korean when I sign up for ready Harris allowed to get notifications. So we decide to handle these issues on our own and made sure our community was kept informed by providing resources that were translated into Koreans. Let's keep our community informed and connected so people can prepare and stay safe during emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ruchi Tewari. You have one minute.
Um, hello commissioners, I'm Ruchi Tewari, a policy advocacy fellow at Wurigun TOS and a Cypress native and constituent of Precinct Three. I'm here today to voice my support for the continuation and expansion of the Holistic Assistance Response Team, HART, to cover patrol Districts Two, Three alongside existing Districts One and Four. The importance of mental health resonates widely, from college students to those seated on the court. The CDC reports over one in five US adults, around seven hundred ten thousand residents in Harris County, grapple with mental illness, with those that have an untreated mental illness crisis being sixteen times more likely to be shot by law enforcement if called. Understandably so, as those trained to deal with these delicate situations such as social workers going through intensive four to nine year programs that cannot be replicated by limited police training. The savings from Precinct One are hopeful, showing six hundred seventy-five hours freed up for law enforcement to dedicate towards more violent situations. HART does not just offer intervention but connects residents with social services, not adding to the existing backlog of thirty-four thousand current criminal cases. Continuation and expansion of the HART program is one in which we promise care over consequences in the moments we needed the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Non-Agenda Speaker Number Thirty, Kevin Shepherd. You have one minute.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Shepherd. I reside in Katy, Texas, seven seven four four nine. And, um, something bothered me about the staff shortage at the Harris County Jail. Um, I don't know if the commissioners know or even the majors know, but they do have a T code rule two eleven three point O, which allows people that had a Class A or Class B misdemeanor to be granted a waiver where they can go before the T code board and become detention officers and police officers. But no, no one at the jail knows about this. No one at the constable's office even know about this. I've even tried every constable's office there, but no one will help. No one wants to do it. So, but I think if they allow these people to go in there and become detention officers, maybe the staffing would not be so messed up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jasmine Telles. You have one minute.
Good afternoon. My name is Jasmine Telles and I am here to represent Texas Rising Students and Organizers from Precinct One at UH NTSU campus. Uh, we are in support of the community safety budget. We recognize that our county needs to invest in services for our people. Youth community programs continue to fund the work of the HART program and more, most importantly, frees law enforcement funding. And in regards to item three hundred and eighty, we are in favor of releasing non-violent cases older than nine months in Harris County jail and replacing the chiller system with HVAC system. Harris County should be recognized for empowering communities and investing in care and services for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the speakers, Commissioner.
Correct, Commissioner Garcia, you have something?
Yes, I, I just wanted to, uh, just say to the Korean community.
American.
Korean American community. But I, uh, I respect you, uh, whether you are new residents to this great country or whether you are established American citizens. I just want to thank you for coming down here to speak, uh, as you did, organized and very succinct to your point. And, um, the issue of making sure that we are fully accessible uh, in any form, uh, and in the best possible way is very important. So I just wanted to let you know that I, uh, I didn't understand everything, but I understood, but I listened to everything. And so thank you so very much.
Thank, thank you all for being here. I know our county administrator was listening, so I'm sure they're gonna follow up with you. It's not on agenda, but you'll follow up. Well, can, can you personally?
If we can borrow your translator.
Borrow yours.
Yeah.
You can go to Mike.
Sorry, I wasn't really taking a note, um, because I wasn't expecting to be here and I'm a, a kind of official Korean English interpreter for Wurigun TOS, also Texas certified interpreter. So I'll just try my best to relay all those information to the Korean American community.
네, 오늘 이렇게 와주셨는데요. 너무 간략하게 잘 조직적으로 이렇게 딱 준비해서 와주셔서 너무 감사하시고요. 감사드리고요. 많은 얘기를 하셨지만 가장 포인트는 뭐였냐면은 어쨌든 어떤 부분은 잘못 알아들으신 것도 있지만 무엇을 원하시는지 너무 잘 받아들였고 가장 중요한 내용은 오늘 이렇게 저희들에게 전달해 주신 내용을 저희가 꼭 팔로워, 후속 조치를 취하겠습니다라고 약속해 주셨습니다.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.